Oh, wait.
Okay, this meeting, the Borough of Madison zoning board of adjustment is now called to order. This is the regular virtual meeting of August 12th, 2021. Can I get an announcement and notice, please? Bob, are you doing that?
Um, I will take care of that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Dennis.
Let the minutes reflect that adequate notice that this meeting has been provided in the following manner. At the reorganization meeting of the board held on January 14th, 2021, the board by resolution adopted an annual schedule of meetings. On January 15th, 2021, a copy of the scheduled meetings was posted at the Bolton Board at the main entrance of Hartley Dodge Memorial was sent to the Madison Eagle and the Daily Record and filed with the Borough Clerk, all in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. In response to public safety considerations and legal authorization, the Board of Adjustment began conducting its meetings remotely using the Zoom platform, and subsequently, separate notices have been published each month advising of this change and indicating that the procedures and requirements for monitoring such meetings and for making public comment, along with an explanation of the audio muting function of the electronic communications platform being utilized, is provided with detailed information on how to use Zoom and participate, found on the Rosenet webpage, communications backslash virtual meetings at www.rosenet.org backslash 1273 backslash virtual meetings.
Thank you, may I get a roll call, please?
Roll call, Mr. Diorno.
Here.
Ms. Driscoll is excused, Mr. Fitzsimmons is excused. Ms. Carr?
Here.
Dr. Patel?
Here.
Ms. Salco?
Here.
And Chairman Santoro?
Yeah.
We have a quorum, I'm sorry, Mr. Foster?
Yes, I am here, Dennis.
I, thank you. Thank you.
I think you missed, Christine is, Turetelli is excused as well.
Right.
I don't think you called her name.
I did not, thank you, Mr. Hall.
All right, would you all join me in a pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic, our republic, and to our nation, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, that's great. All right, first up is minutes for approval, first one is June 10th, 2021. Anybody see anything in there? It looked okay to me. Good. Okay, all in favor of the June 10th meeting minutes as presented, please say aye.
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 Vote. Okay. The minutes are approved, next are the minutes of July 8th, 2021 meeting. I saw one thing, I think, on this, page three, second paragraph, last line. It says approximately 60% additional coverage, it should be approximately 75 square feet additional coverage coverage.
I'm on page three, Mr. Chairman, where is that?
Last line of the second paragraph.
Oh, second paragraph.
Yeah, where it says, take out that 60 to 70%, put 75 square feet.
75 square feet?
Yeah.
Does that replace, Mr. Chairman, does that replace the 60 to 70?
Yeah. Yeah, so it said read to include approximately 75 square feet additional coverage.
Thank you.
No problem, anybody else?
I just had a couple of minor things, on page one, in the announcement of meeting and paragraph two, it says, January 15th, says 20201, we need to take out the second zero.
Got it, thank you.
And then on page four, under the Fridell application, the paragraph starting, Mr. Jeffrey Fridell began his testimony, I think, instead of the word he, we should say and, and then the word he following that should be the, the home is located.
Okay, so it's began his testimony and he stated that the home?
Yeah, I think that would make, I think that would do it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favor of these minutes with the changes discussed, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, okay, these minutes are approved. All right, next, we have resolutions for memorialization. We were quite busy, so we've got a few to go through here. Versus case number Z 20018, Resolution Granting preliminary and final site plan approval, Madison Movie Development LLC Block 2702, Lot 2414, Lincoln Place.
I have to be, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'll comment briefly that I get input on this from initial draft from Mr. Harrington and Mr. Stern and Mr. Santoro, and then shared it with the applicant's attorney, so it's been worked over. There was just one more change that I missed, and then anybody else can change, of course, but on page two, paragraph five, the fifth line, the end, it says basement parking level. I had changed that to lower parking level to avoid any, I'm not sure we ever decided was a basement or cellar or what it was, but it's.
Yeah, I think that's good.
So I, elsewhere I changed it, I missed that change, lower, to the lower level parking area.
So noted, thank you.
That's, and I'll change in my copy and pass it along, but anyway, that was the only change I had, that came to my attention afterwards, so if anybody else.
Yeah, there. Yeah, there, I remember, we talked about a condition for the parking that there would be, I think it was that an affordable unit wouldn't, would not have to pay for parking. And I didn't see that in the conditions, and I'm, you know, I couldn't remember if there were any other conditions, but I know we discussed that one.
Yeah, that's a good point, I mean, the, we can certainly, let's see, I'm looking here. I mean, first of all, the, under the, the ordinance and the accepted law, the, the affordable occupants are entitled to the same amenities as the other people, and they can't be charged extra, so that would probably apply anyway, but let's call that out. And we did also, I don't know if Russell or Dennis raised it, they have to comply with all the comments, you know. But we comply, I mean, I hate to plug in one and not then think of everything else we forgot to mention, so, let's, I'd suggest that go in a find it somewhere, let's see where that was, because it is important, it was discussed, I agree. Now, I want to get into, we never resolved how you deal with the handicap spaces and if other people need it, but let me just find a spot. Well, why don't we just plug in a new paragraph, let's see. How about a new, after, between 33 and 34, just say there was discussion parking garage usage? And the applicant agreed affordable unit occupants, Dan, they not pay extra, pay the same, or I forget where, well, we.
I don't remember.
We, if that was included, everybody, I know there was one for each unit, there was entitlement to one.
Well, the, yeah, the, well, the idea, yeah, would be that they wouldn't be getting charged for parking, and then obviously perhaps not have parking, right? So the idea would be they, they would be entitled to one space.
Affordable occupants would not be charged for parking, is that what we discussed, I can't remember.
That was the thrust of it, right, guys?
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds right.
Okay, so a new paragraph 34, renumber the rest, there was discussion of parking garage usage, comma, now going agreed that, that the affordable unit occupants would not be charged for parking, how's that?
Right.
Okay, now going a new 35, four, and the rest get renumbered accordingly.
Okay, did anybody else have any comments on that one?
As I said, Anthony, there's a catchall that they gotta comply with everything. Russell Stern and Dennis recommended either writing or orally, so I think we should be covered, anything we missed, but and they were cooperative, they're not gonna, you know, if we overlooked anything, and if they said it, they said it, and they'll be bound by that, so I wouldn't. As I said, rather than try to articulate every specific condition, I think that, that's, this is a usable approach in this case.
Okay, anybody else have any other suggestions? Okay, so, and before we go to a vote on, I just want to say Gary did a terrific job on that, that was really a big lift to be able to do that, and we always appreciate the detail when we have a tough one like that, that was seven or eight meetings worth of content, so thank you. All in favor of this, this resolution is discussed, they say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, before.
You don't have a quorum, do you?
Mr. Carr and Mr. Foster cannot vote?
No, on the memorializing resolution, you, it's only the people who voted yes that vote, and it doesn't matter quorum or not, in theory, one person could vote on the resolution, yeah, hypothetically. So that's not an issue.
Okay. Yes.
But whoever, and I, I did put the vote there, I believe, so, it's, ever on the last page was listed as voting on the the resolution, that's a wait a minute. Well, this is wrong. Had Tony DeRosa, I know she was. Yeah.
I think Tony phoned it in.
One, two, three. Do I miss somebody? Oh, Tim probably voted on this.
Yeah.
Tim was there?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, because I know Helen and, and, and James, they stepped aside, so everybody else, I think, participated. Yeah, so that's fine, so they, Tim's not here, Christine's not here, and and Diane's not here, but the, the other people should, so Dennis, if you have the, the paper there, it's, or I can call it, it's Dr. Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Salco?
Yes.
Mr. Diorno?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Santoro?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that's adopted, that's a majority anyway, but we don't need five votes for that. Okay, all right, that one's adopted, and I will forward a, and actually, on that one, I'll forward a corrected version to, actually, I think Bob I talked to, or Dennis, somebody, so they can get resolutions out before Fran gets back. So that's done.
Excuse me, Gary, I just had a question, I have not seen this particular resolution, but on all of the other resolutions we have tonight, I noticed that the last paragraph of each resolution does not include the language that is extended by the permanent extension act, which we've been using, is that intentional or not?
Well, actually, the, the, the Extension Act has expired now. Not that I take credit for thinking about that, but it, the, the Permanent Extension Act, the extension for COVID, by its terms expired upon expiration of a declared state of health emergency by the governor, which happened as of June. So, things are approved before, they, they were told until then, and then the, the time started to run again. But anything, it doesn't matter, because they're, they're not under that at all.
Okay, so we wouldn't need that language on these?
No, so you don't need it.
Okay. Okay, great.
Yeah, but good, good catch, I didn't think about that.
Okay, so next up is case number Z 21004, Resolution Granting variance to the application to Christopher and Stephanie Donato, Lot 4001, Lot 45241, Woodland Road. That one looked good for me. Everybody else, okay?
Gary, there are a few typos that I caught, you might just want to note of them.
Yeah, why don't you tell me right now, so I can do it.
Okay, paragraph four, the last line, adjusted, misspelled.
Okay, good.
Paragraph seven, the last line, the word line is misspelled.
A rear lot line, yeah, okay.
Paragraph nine, on the second line, the word inclusion.
Oh, yeah.
Paragraph 10, second line, stormwater. Needs an R.
Oh, yeah, okay. Good boy.
And then in the description of the variance in the second paragraph.
Yeah.
First line, hereby.
Oh, yeah.
And then, and second, second paragraph, the last line, right at the end, the word to needs to be fixed.
Oh, right, yeah, okay, yeah, great, I don't know how that happened. If I was in a hurry to get it to Fran, there were so many, hopefully the others aren't like that, but anyway, yeah, anything, anything else from anyone?
Okay, so, all in favor of this resolution is discussed, please say aye.
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 Okay, this one is adopted, this resolution is adopted. Case number Z 21014, Resolution Granting variance application, Herman and Huber Block 3702, Lot 554, Maple Ave. There was a typo on page two, section eight, first word.
Right, should be they, that's right.
And on that one quick comment, I did get contacted by the applicant in Huber, she was raised some questions, and she asked that the last sentence in A, the garage will continue to be used for storage. She didn't think they'd committed to do that, I, this is just a finding, I, I did talk this with the chairman about this, I, I think that's accurate, but in my view is once, in the plans, once you get rid of the garage, the driveway to the garage, it.
What could it be used for?
Yeah, so I don't know what, that was over, that's what lawyers do, but anyway, I, I said I'd bring it, I, up with the board, the garage will continue to be used for storage purposes, I, I think that's an accurate statement of the understanding of that application, so.
That's what I came away with.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay, I brought it up, and, yeah, it's paper technical, okay, but, but they will be changed, okay.
All right, so any other changes to this resolution? Okay, all in favor of this resolution is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh. Okay, this resolution's adopted.
And there were no changes, Mr. Chairman, to that?
One word, one word, uh, paragraph eight, page two, first word is spelled wrong, they.
Yeah, that'll be changed, I'll change that. If you want to know, it was a typo.
Okay, next is, is, hold on one second here. Case number is Z 21016, Resolution Granting variance application to Jeffrey Fridell, Block 1104, Lot 1462, Ridgeville Ave.
Worked fine to me.
Yeah, that one looked all right. Anybody have anything? Okay, all in favor of this resolution is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? Okay, this resolution is adopted. Next, next number is case number Z 21018, Resolution Granting variance application to Carson, Lot 4702, Lot 439, Know-We-Ave. That one, I didn't see anything on that, that looked okay.
No, I didn't have any changes either, I didn't see anything.
Okay, so, anybody else? Okay, all in favor of this resolution is presented, please say aye.
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 Post? All right, this resolution is adopted. Next is Resolution Granting variance application to Kevin and Julie Trap, Block 4004, Lot 283 Palmer Way Road, that's KZ 21 dash 019. That looked okay to me.
Me too.
Okay, anybody else? All right, all in favor of this resolution is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? Okay, this resolution is adopted. Next, we have scheduling and procedural matters, we have one application, Z 21022, Paul Brothers, 12 Douglas Avenue, that will be heard on September 9th, so that's carried without further notice. Is there anything else, Gary?
No, no, just, I think, as, well, the one thing I'll bring up, and we, it's quickly, I believe Dennis said the, the Starbucks is now complete, right?
It is complete, the board planner has deemed it complete, I've issued a technical memorandum, and I believe our plan will be issuing his shortly.
Yeah, I think, yeah, but anyway, just so people know, and the other thing, that, the owner's hell or partner, so if you see that name, don't get confused. I prefer to call it Starbucks, they're the user, not the owner. But anyway, they, I understand that they will probably want to be requesting a special meeting that can be discussed at the September meeting. Presumably, they can notice for that meeting, and then we can talk about a special, normally, I think what we've often done, common date is a fourth Thursday, but we'll deal with that at that time, if they officially ask for, give deposit the money, then we can schedule, if the board wants to do that. But I'm just giving you a heads up for that, and we'll, I'll talk with Fran when she gets back, and she'll send some emails out to alert people to that, I'm just giving a heads up right now.
That's perfect, thank you. Okay, so let's move on to business, we have case number Z 21020, Doug and Nancy Willis, and that's Roseville Avenue, they're returning, made changes to their application, we should have all received, so, Bob, you need to promote Doug Willis?
Doug and Nancy are here?
Okay. We need to see video on that.
Doesn't look like I can control that. Wait a second, there you go, join as panelist, okay.
Usually down at the bottom, there would be, yep, a mute.
Oh, there we go, yeah, there they are.
Okay, great.
Who else, Mr. Chairman, who else needs to be promoted?
I don't know, do you have any consultants, Mr. and Mrs. Willis?
No.
You don't have to, I'm just asking. Then we don't, I don't think there's anyone else then. When we get to public comment, you can offer, and somebody may want to join in, but for now, it's just them, unless they have a witness they want to call, that's fine. And I believe you both sworn in last time.
Correct.
Yes.
And you remain under oath, so we don't need to do it again. And I guess we got a revised plan, and I guess on that, and now Fran and our secretaries on vacation, so Mr. Harrington's filling in. I guess we probably should, just for housekeeping purposes, make a notation of the, the new plan we got, Dennis, do you have the application file there, I don't know.
I, I do, I do, Mr. Hall.
Are the prior ones marked, I mean, that's how we had been doing it. Let's see if the prior plan has a A1 or something on it.
I have A2 was a certain, a couple of photographs, I'm looking for A1, A1 was, A1 was the prior plan.
I guess actually the minutes will reflect if we can grab that, what was marked with that, this is the only time left to do that.
A1 was the architectural plan for Mr. Antonio. And that was dated February 28th and revised to April 28th.
Okay, and that's fine, and so let's mark as A3, the revised plan that we have is revision dated 7/23/21, and everyone should have that. And we got a letter with that, I don't think we need to mark that, we can talk about that. Okay.
All right, so why don't the Willis's, tell us what you've presented, what you're going to present, and we're, we're happy to hear it.
All right, well, we appreciate your time, and we also appreciate the feedback that we got from the last meeting, and with that feedback, we met both with our architect and our contractor, and made adjustments that are reflected in the revised plan that you have. The major change that was based on comment, comments that said the board really didn't want us to maintain the, the 13 feet off of Dean Street, because that would, that would, if we had any cars parked in front of the garage, they would hang over the sidewalk, so what we did is we are taking six and a half feet off the front of the garage, which will allow for 20 feet of parking space in front of the garage. And, you know, with, and that parking space accommodates two vehicles, along with two vehicles that could be parked in the garage, so there was a comment also that, you know, it could, it should accommodate up to four cars, and this will accommodate up to four cars without any infringement on the sidewalk. We also reduced the square footage by 70 square feet from 606 to 536. And we did add three feet onto the back end of the garage, and we did that because if we take the six and a half feet off the front, and we don't add the three feet on the back, you have a 23-foot long garage, we have a truck, the truck is 18 feet, that would allow only five feet of space on the back end of the garage, if we just parked the truck to, you know, right up against the front of the garage. And we do want to have some storage space in the garage for, you know, lawn equipment. So, that is the change that we've made, or the changes that we've made, given the feedback that we got from the board last meeting.
Hey, how's the board feel?
I feel terrific about it.
Me too.
Looks.
I think, I think they did a very, very good thing in terms of basically chopping the front off. I think actually it was Roger's suggestion last time that they think about doing that, and as long as their architect and their contractor thinks that that will work, I think that's a good solution.
This one quick comment for the record, I don't think it's a problem, but the they've added a, a minor variance for the, I guess it's a side setback for the garage, it's 3.3 feet, four inches, supposed to be five, so it's a little short. It was six feet, four inches, and in order to accommodate the larger garage and, and create the 20 feet from the street, that was unavoidable. That is an additional variance, it's not a major one, and to see, you're aware, but that's all.
Yeah, I, I think that's fine, the rear property line, you know, the, the adjacent garage is probably about a foot and a half off the property line, you know, very close.
You can see it on the plan, yeah, it's further to the front even.
I feel very comfortable with that three foot.
Yeah, no, it seems okay, so.
And just so the board knows, we did, the property owners of that property that's adjacent to us are the Sinhas, and I know you can't accept hearsay here, but we did have a conversation with Gretchen and Rajan, and they were fine with that, and we have an email from them that we could forward if necessary.
They weren't able to attend the meeting.
Yeah.
Tonight.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, that's, you know, would you always say, well, that's great, but they can move tomorrow. I've been somewhat facetious, but if they had a problem, they would be here, obviously.
All right. Yeah, and, and it, the change satisfies my, my concerns, because the prior plan had, had you parking essentially over the sidewalk, but in the right of way, and we've, we've encountered this in the past, and I don't believe it would be correct for us to approve an application where you're parking in the right of way, so I appreciate that you've made that change, that's very important. And relative to the other change, we just talked about that setback, I'm, I'm. And relative to the other change, we just talked about that setback, I'm I'm not, I don't like to grant setback variances unless there's no choice, right? So if there's alternatives, I prefer not to do it, but in this case, because you have real hardship with this lot, there really isn't alternative, so I think it's justified in this case, so I don't have a problem with that. So so I'm good with the application. So anybody else want to make a comment? Because then we'll just move it along and go go into deliberation. I just want to, I should open up the public and see if there's any members of the public that have their hands raised.
I don't see any, any hands raised, Mr. Chairman. I don't see any, they're showing.
Okay, so I'm going to close the public portion there and then I'll give the Willises just a blast opportunity to say anything to close out.
We appreciate the board's time.
Okay, so why don't we move to deliberation? So why don't we start with Roger?
Thank you. I'm very grateful the applicant made those changes there. One of my pet peeves, and maybe from the last meeting could tell, is walking and having cars on sidewalks. So I think it's a great benefit to the neighborhood and actually to town by making that change. And I I think that outweighs any detriments created by variances. So I'm fully in favor of it. Thank you.
Helen?
Well, I was in favor of the first plan and this one's better, so I'm for it.
Anthony?
Yeah, you know, certainly appreciate the changes and taking the feedback and I think it's a great plan.
Very soon.
And you know, I wasn't at the earlier testimony, but just in reviewing the earlier zoning table and the updated one and the updated plans, I sort of identified what the concerns of the board were on the earlier application. And especially just the parking in the right of way caught my eye as well. And you know, we always talk about each application being so unique and this one has its own unique set of hardships in regards to the lot. But I think the applicant applicant works so hard to make this work for us and I appreciate it as well. I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Good Jim?
Consistent with my earlier comments, I'm supportive of the application.
Okay, I'm in sort of support of the application. I've already stated reviews on it, so I'm good with it. So there's no conditions, it's just been a revised application. So can we get a motion to approve this application, please? Okay, Helen is second, who is first?
Jim.
Jim and then Helen. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. DiOono.
Yes.
Ms. Carr.
Yes.
Dr. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Santoro.
Yes.
Mr. Foster.
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, the application was approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Tim and Erin Nastro. And that is case number Z twenty-one oh twenty-one, block nine oh five, lot nine, thirty Longview Avenue. Applicants are seeking permission to construct a secondary addition, cover terrace and to reconfigure an existing dry-laid walkway in an R three single-family residential zone requiring relief from the side yard setback right and maximum So we need a, we need a camera on those guys. Hello?
Hello.
Welcome.
Hi.
Do you have anyone else with you to, needs to make an appearance?
So yes, our architect Nick Bensley from East West Architecture should be.
Oh, Nicky, Nicky, in the, got him? He's in the attendees, Nicky. Is that right?
Yes, Nick, Nick Bensley.
In the waiting room, Dennis?
No, he's been promoted, but he just needs.
He's been promoted.
Oh, okay, I just didn't see on the screen.
Mr. Hall goes on top of it.
Hello.
Hello, Nick.
I seem to have everything but a picture.
Yeah, bottom left of your screen is probably where your start and stop video is.
Video, got it. There you go.
There we go, there we go.
Hello.
Welcome, Nick.
Technologically challenged.
All right, I will swear in the applicants and Mr. Bensley, if you'd all raise your right hand. Do you saw, I mean, swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
Yeah.
Thank you. And why don't we why don't we collectively mark what's been filed through the record, which you have, but I'll go through what I have and we have a zoning denial letter, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-one for Mr. Buckaloo. Do you have that, Dennis?
I do show that.
Okay, we'll call that B one. No, the culture, we have survey. KY land survey. About twenty-nine and nineteen, that can be A one. Two, okay, architectural site plans for Mr. Bensley, East West Architecture. There's sheet A one and A two collectively can be A two. Variance set dated five, ten, twenty-one collectively A two for the two sheets.
Yeah, the data service twelve twenty-six nineteen.
Oh, wait, did I get that? Oh, would that, yeah, but the plan itself, Mr. Bensley's date is ten twenty-one. Oh, are you saying the survey?
Yeah, the survey, you said twelve twenty-nine.
Twelve twenty, oh, twelve twenty-six nineteen, okay, I'm sorry. And then we have lastly set of two sheets, oh, no, it's one sheet fold out of color photo, six photos can be exhibit eight, right? And hopefully everyone has those and then we can move forward.
Great, hey, happy to have you here. Once you tell us about your application, maybe the Nastros want to start.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for hearing us tonight. Aaron and I and our family moved into Madison January of twenty twenty, so just about six weeks before everything went haywire. We have two kids, a three-year-old daughter and a one-year-old son. And during the process of looking at homes and and that whole experience, we fell in love with this house. And and knowing that it had, you know, a nice piece of land and perhaps down the line, we could maybe make some improvements. Realized that we we probably want to add a a fourth bedroom to have some additional space for family and both my parents and Aaron's parents live far away, so when they they come to visit, they currently stay on the couch in the in the small little den here. So we're looking at additional bedroom. And to upgrade our existing mudroom here and add a covered patio on the back back end of it. Just to have a little outdoor, covered outdoor space.
Okay, would you like to have Mr. Bensley go through it?
Yes.
Good evening, hi, how are you all? So we're here looking for really two variants for these, one being side yard setback. With the existing garage and the others for relief for allowable building coverage. The side yard pertains to building over the existing garage. The building coverage pertains to doing a covered terrace in the back of the house. The site is oversized in the yard three zone and is currently non-conforming with regards to the side yard setback. Where seventeen feet is required. Normally in the R three, it's twelve feet. This lot is oversized, so that increases as per the ordinance to seventeen feet. The existing setback of the garage on the right-hand side is seven and a half feet off the property lawn. Impervious coverage is well under the twenty-five percent, it's twenty-five percent, where thirty percent is allowable, so we're comfortably underneath that. And the existing building coverage, as it is now, is at fifteen, which is the max allowed. There are some photographs that you all should have, shows mostly the front and the back of the Nastro's property. What I want to point out, because one of our design concerns was on that seven and a half foot side setback where the garage is, the adjacent property next door is also at about seven and a half feet. So one of the things we wanted to try to do was see if we couldn't add on to the second floor in a way that was as imposing to the side of your neighbors as possible. The neighborhood is a mix of variety of styles, some one-car garages, some two-car garages. The adjacent house to the right of the Nastro's has a nice long front porch that runs the length of the main body of the house. The house to the left, which I don't have photographs of, has, is a very large lot and has a covered terrace attached to the back. The existing house system said is a three-bedroom, two-bath residence. And the mudroom that we're looking to do some work to is currently their laundry room. Sandwiched between the garage and the entry into the back of the house. I would like to address both of these, the two segments of this project separately, if I could, with regards to the variance issues versus with the addition over the existing garage. The goal here was to get a laundry room out of the mudroom and upstairs, provide a decent-sized bedroom and bath for guests and visiting family.
By the way, if you wanted to share a screen, you could do that.
Yeah, hopefully my drawings are clear enough that I don't need to, but if I need to jump there, I can share a screen. Most technically challenged with these things, so I'm afraid I push the wrong button and everything goes haywire. So what we tried to do with this addition over the garage was try to keep it as low a profile as possible. If you look at the elevations and you're familiar with the way we set up our plans for you all, we've got existing conditions for floor plans. And proposed side by side there on page one, on page two, we have building elevation showing you the existing and what our proposed elevations are. So really, our goal was trying to add on enough space to accommodate Tim and Aaron's program on the second floor here over the garage, was to try to keep it as low as possible. So it steps down from the second floor basically to what the current ceiling of the garage is. And we played a little bit with roof lines here and felt that hipping that roof would soften the impact on the neighbors next door and probably blend in as well as we could blend in without in a second floor over this non-conforming side yard setback. Our hardship here is obviously working with an existing condition of the garage that's seven and a half feet from the property line. Not worsening that setback in any way and trying to do everything we can do to blend it as nicely as possible with the existing house. The second part of this application is the proposed two hundred and fifty square foot covered terrace on the back of the house. And that takes our existing fifteen percent building coverage and pushes it up to sixteen point nine percent. While we are exceeding the allowable building coverage, I want to point out that we're well under the maximum previous coverage with this proposed attached terrace, we go from fifteen percent up to sixteen point nine. And the impervious for the site is twenty-six point nine, where thirty percent is allowable, so we're well under the impervious limits. This terrace provides Tim and Aaron a covered access into the mudroom, which is now going to serve as a mudroom. As well as providing a small dining area and a sitting area. And we extended past the back of the house a bit, so they had a sitting area where they had an opportunity to be on that terrace and still see their young kids playing in the backyard. And I should say their desire for covered terrace isn't just for rainy days. It's also for just not being in the sun when they're outdoors and they really want to enjoy their beautiful backyard. So this is something they really would desire to have. We carried the same hip vocabulary that we had on the garage, second floor, around the back. Again, just to try to blend in with the house, soften some of the height and kind of maintain that architectural character we created over the garage. I propose, you know, I always have to come up with a hardship here and gonna reach out on a limb here and say, I think our hardship with regards to this covered terrace is one of location. Madison gives a lot of leniency to doing a front porch. It doesn't count towards building coverage if it can acquire, if it can handle a furniture layout. And really, that's why I say it's a location problem. The Nastros don't want a front porch, they want a back porch. And I should mention again, there's no impervious coverage issue with this. And we think it blends in nicely with the house and provides an Astros with what they would like to have for a functioning backyard. Happy to answer any questions.
Is any members of the board want to jump in?
Nick, I just had one question. It's really more a matter of curiosity. So is the if you're on the, if you're on the new second floor, you're actually stepping down from the existing structure into the addition, into the additional structure, is that it?
Right, there's about a three-step down to that new second floor level over the garage.
Okay, that's what it looked like. I just wanted to check.
Yeah, whereas the question is, why don't you want a front porch? I think it's great having the rain off your head when you're coming in the door and I I kind of would think it would look more attractive. Is there a reason why you don't want a front porch?
It's a, that's a much bigger job.
Okay.
We want to see our kids in the back, really.
Yeah, we have a fenced-in backyard, it's kind of, you know, our our space that we, we spend most of our time.
Additionally, there would also be a front yard setback problem.
I realize that, I realize that.
There, no, I, I think, I think what Mr. Patel, I think what Mr. Patel is considering is if you want to have cover over your front stoop there. And, you know, it's not unusual for us to grant that because it's some, a safety really, because therefore when you're come out and there's snow and there's ice on your front stoop, you have some protection for visitors is what we say. I mean, I don't know, we could survey the board, but but you did say it's a modest cover over the front.
Well, there is an exclusion for for small ones, I forget the parameters, but.
Yeah, it's like eight feet by five, or something like that.
As Mr. Bensley said, the front porches are excluded from the principal building coverage, as I recall. I mean, I mean, that's either here or there, but but I guess, I mean, you may not even need a variance to do that. I haven't studied it.
Right, I didn't want to spend your money. I just thought since you're doing this, it might be a good time to do it and I.
I understand, I understand.
It may be one of those things where after you go down with this, like, how come we didn't do that?
We chatted about it early on and the focus is really in the backyard.
Yeah, and I didn't want to get sidetracked, I just was bringing that up.
It's up to you guys, if you want to ask for it now, if not, no problem.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have one or two questions, Mr. Chairman, if no other board member has any questions.
Certainly.
This question could be for both the Nastros and Mr. Bensley. With regard to drainage, do you have a plan, Mr. Bensley, where the the roof leaders are going to be directed? My concern is obviously directing it to neighboring properties. And I'm wondering if the Nastros might know whether or not you have an existing drywall on the progress.
So we are not aware and we're never aware of any existing drywells. We do have a so our, we're kind of in the middle of the downslope of a hill and it, there is a existing rock. I wouldn't, it wouldn't be like a big drywall, but it's like the, I guess like a French drain on the still getting used to this town, so that's.
The left side of the house.
Yeah, facing the house, the left, there's a French drain that that as the water comes down the hill collects in that and runs off. On the garage side, there is existing leaders going off into of the front, going down the driveway and then the bolt in the back, I believe, is I'd have to look into that exactly. I know there's, there is. I'd have to look into that exactly. I know there's, there is a couple leaders here, but I believe they go down into that system that runs to the left side of the property again.
I might be clarified a little bit more. There was a pretty large addition done to this house. So I believe it was somewhere around two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. There wasn't a, I don't believe there was a variance required for that. Danny couldn't find any previous variance issues because I was trying to identify when that seven and a half foot side yard setback for the garage was, was done and whether there was a variance for it. And that was built way back probably in the sixties or so, so there was no record of anything there. But the addition that's on the back of the house was a master bedroom suites and a breakfast extension and a family room, which would have been over the four hundred square feet required. So I have to believe that there is a dry well in that back property where those rear leaders run to. Our intent, again, not going to do anything different with a garage addition that's already over an existing space. Our intent with two hundred and fifty square foot terraces to, you know, if there was any opportunity to find out what the seepage pit was, we could always tap into that because I know those leaders and downspouts in the back of the house tie into that. They have to.
They're directed underground. They're going into some kind of a system.
Some kind of system. And over by the mudroom side, you know, that's not an awful lot of water running there. I imagine we'd probably take that into the same garage system in the corner there and direct it to wherever that goes out to the street.
Because if I, if I recollect, when you walk in the back and you get, you know, ten or fifteen feet into the back, there's a green drain, right? There's a drain back there in, in the lot. Is that your house? I'm trying to remember which house I saw it in. I thought I saw, is there a drain in the, in the yard there?
I mean, the property, the back property, if you look at the elevation, it's pretty level.
Oh, okay.
But it slopes off towards, if you're looking at the front of the house, it slopes off to the left quite substantially throughout the whole course of that property. So any drainage is going to run across their whole backyard and we can't tie into the seepage pits there. That's all going to get absorbed into the lawn area for.
That's my only concerns, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, do we, we don't want to take any action on that?
Perhaps that could be done during the building permit process that they always send the plans to us to double check that it meets with the approval. Would the detailed plans, Mr. Bensley include where the roof leaders of the addition are directed so that we can, you know, ensure that there's no adverse effect to neighboring adjacent properties?
Absolutely. We can clarify that in our construction drawings. I doubt I'm going to get any info. Tried this on several other projects with seepage pits to get some info on the seepage pit, its capacity. I've had very little luck in finding those. But if there's an opportunity to tap in that one corner and that existing downspout leader that runs through the seepage pit will indicate that.
That's acceptable to me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so why don't we make that a condition, Gary?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just looking. It looks like the, look at the photo, the rear yard, the lower left. It looks like there's a roof leader going down to the ground. And if I look at the plan, it looks like the addition will hook around that corner and maybe literally require that, that downspout roof leader to be changed. Do you see that?
Yeah, we could redirect it. We could also take.
I mean, I don't know whether it's even probably thought about, but you know, I guess that's what you're saying. You can connect them potentially.
We could easily run that downspout right through the corner that's terrace that wraps around.
We'll just put address rear roof leaders. Connects with the building permit. How's that? Dennis, does that sound sensible?
That sounds acceptable to me, Mr. Ball. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll put some language in there. It's not necessarily checking to make sure there's no problem. Okay.
Thank you for that input, Mr. Harrington. Appreciate that. And for the applicants, we're just always concerned about no net impact to neighboring properties. Some courtesy we grant you if your neighbors wanted to do something. That's for sure. Okay. Other comments from the board? Any, anything else?
Nick, can I ask you just for my, just, just so I can frame it in my mind, how big is the existing wooden deck currently?
Uh, it's about ten by ten.
Okay, it's really small. I know when I visited the site, I didn't see any issues with water there. And, and I noted that it wasn't really functional, like the grill was not on the deck and, you know, so I understand the applicant's need for more space there. I think my struggle is, is that, you know, there's really no hardship, but I think that if we could mitigate any water issues, as we just discussed, I'd be more in favor of this application. I understand the issue with the setback with the second story over the garage. It's just with this, because it's covered, it's just pushing that number up. That's my only concern.
Okay, anything else from the board? Because I'm going to open up the public.
I, I'd just like to say that I think that because the impervious coverage still has a lot of headroom in it. I was not as disconcerted by the porch, the covered porch.
That's fine. And actually, as often the board says, the building coverage function is focuses in part at least on building mass. And if it's an open covered porch, that's less infringing. And of course, in the backyard, that's less infringing. It's one story that's less infringing. So I think, and I agree, does that make a hardship? Maybe not, but it, it does certainly mitigate against any impact for sure. But as long as, if you check the, the stormwater, I think that could be a benefit to justify this.
Okay, great. All right, I'm going to go to the public unless we have another comment. Okay, do we have any hands raised? All right, so this would be an opportunity for the public either to ask a question or make a comment, other than supporter, opposition to the application. Is anybody out there?
I do not see any hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll close the public portion. So the Nastros, any last comments you'd like to make to close out your presentation?
Nope, just thank you everyone for your time. And were any issues, we're happy to work with everyone to, you know, resolve any concerns.
Okay, great. So we're gonna, thank you very much. And we're gonna close the presentation portion and go to deliberation. So Anthony, would you like to go first?
Sure. I, you know, I like the plan. As far as the setback, you know, you're working with what you have. The neighbor, you know, they're pretty close too, but they have a second story there. So, you know, what you're proposing is basically just going to match the next door neighbor. And then, you know, I was thinking in line with Gary's point that the, the terrace or, you know, patio or porch is open. So you don't really have the effect of the building coverage for that reason. So I'm in favor of it.
Very good. Roger?
Yeah, I agree with everything. I'm quite in favor of this. The property which is adjacent to the right, which is the closest one, is quite a bit, the hill, it really runs uphill quite significantly in that area. It's already far above it height wise. There's really no windows on their second story there. It has a hip roof you're putting in, which really minimizes. So the right side to me is fine. The property to the south, the lawn is quite open there, which should absorb most of the water. I don't see a hardship at all, but I think it's such a significant upgrade to the property that I would think that'll weigh any, any variances.
Okay, thank you. Helen?
I don't really have anything to add. I, I think it's good.
Jim?
To me, it looks like a nice, well done, modest project. I think we should approve it.
Harry Sue?
Yep, I'm in favor, just so long as you explore that there's no issues with water and runoff, but beyond that, I'd be in favor of it.
Okay, I'm in favor of the application. I think it's rather modest variance. And I think it does add utility to the house and it's attractive. So indeed, I don't see any real issues here. So I am in favor of it. So with that, with the one condition, Gary, and the condition is that they have to confer, have to seek approval from engineer?
Yeah, I think it would be addressed rear roof leaders, prior to building permit to confirm no existing or in, or future stormwater impact, something like that. I think that.
Is that good with you, Dennis? Okay, that's so.
Acceptable to me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Can we get a motion?
No move.
I can.
I, I proposed it.
There you go. Roll call, please.
Mr. DiIona?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Dr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Salco?
Yes.
Chairman Santoro?
Yes.
And Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, well, congratulations for application approved.
Thank you very much.
A lot of luck. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next up is case number Z twenty one oh twenty three, Allison and Jake Cash Paul, block forty one oh three, lot two, four Harwood Drive, applicant for which stairs, deck with stairs, paper patio with sidewalk, removal of the thing slate patio, proportionate of the existing driveway, replacement of existing door doors and relocation of replacement of existing air conditioning unit in R one, single family residential zone requiring relief from maximum principal building coverage and maximum previous block coverage. Hey, welcome.
Hello, thank you for having us. Good evening.
Glad you're here. Gary's going to take care of a couple of things first.
Yeah, okay, let's mark with the, the record for. We have a zoning denial letter, May nineteen, twenty twenty one.
Sorry, sorry, that's, we have our architect who I think is on the.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that. Okay, so who's that?
Cindy Burner Lane, Cindy Burner Lane, sorry.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So we have the zoning denial letter, May nineteen, twenty twenty one. That'll be B one. We have a boundary and topo survey four fifteen twenty one by extra walker. That'll be A one. We have, let's see, set of, I'll call them architecture plans, sheets one through nine. Cindy Born or Lay Architects, dated, last dated five twelve twenty one collectively will be A two. I think that's all. Did we? Anything? Oh, we have some photographs. We'll mark them. As a three, a set of two sheets, four photos will be collectively A three. So then I can swear the applicants and the architect, Dan, could you raise your right hand? You saw me swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
I do, yeah.
Great, thank you. Okay, we can go.
Good evening. Thank you in advance for your time and consideration. This is Jake. I'm Allison. We purchased our home here at Four Harwood Drive back in two thousand and six. We lived in Chatham briefly before moving out from New York City. And we chose Madison because I personally grew up in Comet Station and still have family there, as well as family here in Madison. We also needed access to the train to New York City, where Jake and I both usually work pre-COVID. And we plan to both be heading back a few days a week post-COVID. We chose this particular house because it backs up to Nile Park, which we absolutely loved. We have three children. All three have attended the Madison Junior School and our youngest is a rising seventh grader there. We're invested in this town. We want to stay here. We did briefly think about moving within town before deciding to renovate, but we decided we love the street. We love the property backing up to the park, the proximity to the center of town and friends and family, and we weren't going to find that elsewhere. So we're committed to staying here and making this nineteen sixty two home work better for our family. We have done some minor renovating over the years, such as updating the bathrooms, replacing windows and roofing. But now it's time to make the home work better for us. When we first began thinking about renovating, we did not know this addition would require variance. Multiple neighbors have done similar and more extensive projects, some also requiring variances. We've lived in this house for fifteen years now, and we just want to bring it up to more modern standards, especially the kitchen. We would like to have a more open floor plan to make spending time as a family more comfortable. We've spoken to a few of our neighbors about our plans and they were excited for us, knowing that we've wanted to do this for some time now. We hired our architect Cindy at the recommendation of a friend who used her as well in a project in Madison. We know that our proposal requires both a building coverage and a lot coverage variance. And if there's no questions of either of us, we'd like to turn it over to Cindy, who can discuss more specifics.
I think that'd be fine. Why don't you get started?
Do you guys need to pre-qualify me or do you all remember me?
You're licensed architect, correct? Your license is current. Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to brief walk you through the project. So I'm actually going to share my screen and I apologize. I'm technically challenged as well, but I'm going to go to a world. So it just takes me a second to kind of flip through. So I'm just going to do that. Sorry, sheet two. It's like this long drawn out process because it's PDFs on a i-device, which it doesn't like. All right, so it should be coming up now. And these are the, these are the same plans that you have. There's no changes or differences. They're exactly the same as what you have in front of you as well. So this is sheet two, the first floor plan. Kind of zoom it up there for you. All right, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so on the first plan, first floor plan, we plan on adding an addition going out towards the rear twelve feet and adding about three hundred square feet to the rear to enlarge and open up the kitchen, breakfast room and family, family room. Internally, the existing kitchen will become a mudroom and pantry, which will connect the currently disconnected dining room to the kitchen area. Currently, you can't get from the kitchen to the dining room without leaving and going through the foyer. We will also create an office internally by stealing space from the existing living room. We will also lose a formal living room to utilize that as the family room. We believe we have efficiently rearranged and reused existing spaces as much as possible to minimize the amount of addition we would need to achieve our goals. I'm now going to bring you to the elevations. So this is sheet five of your drawings. And I'll just zoom in on those. Can all see that, okay?
Yeah, I could see it.
Okay, the addition is entirely in the rear of the property. The top drawing is the rear elevation. And it can't be seen from the street. The addition is also one story in nature and minimal to achieve the goals of a larger, more open kitchen, breakfast and family room and providing for a mudroom and office space. We believe the additions are also an enhancement to the existing traditional colonial home and blend into both the character of this home as well as the neighborhood. The variances that we need, so I'm going to flip to sheet one. So again, same sheet one that you have on your drawings. This is the site plans. So as mentioned, we require two variances for our proposal, building coverage and lot coverage. The first is building coverage. We believe our variance is the minimum, being point eight percent or about two hundred square feet over the allowable. If our lot was conforming, it would be a point six variance or one hundred and fifty three square foot over. If our lot was conforming, it would be a point six variance or a hundred and fifty-three square foot over, uh, variance. Uh, so our lot is slightly undersized for the zone. The current building coverage is nine point six percent. Therefore, we only had about a hundred square feet to play with before requiring a variance. The home was built in the nineteen sixties and besides some minor repairs and interior renovations, hasn't been significantly altered. The current kitchen, as mentioned, is small and completely disconnected from the dining room, so it would be nice to open up these spaces to more conducive to modern day living. And of course, allow for the much-needed COVID nineteen home office as the catch falls foresee continuing to work from home. Again, the addition is entirely to the rear, very well screened with both deciduous and evergreen trees to both of the side yard neighbors and one story in nature. It should also be noted that there is no rear yard neighbor as the park is directly behind us. Just going to quickly switch you on a Google map, which actually I don't think, um. You have in the package. So do we need to mark this as a four?
Yeah, you can. And if you leave a copy or or email a copy, I guess, to, uh. The secretary, it's going to go in the file. That's good.
So just zoom in on this. So the red dot is the, um, Catch Falls House. So you can see, A, how well screened it is with trees all around it and B, how you can see the park is, uh, directly behind us. So not really intruding on any of our neighbors', uh, privacy or view. A lot coverage, we are increasing our lot coverage by only about nineteen square feet. Again, it's de minimis increase. Our lot coverage is already over the allowable at twenty-five point one percent, whereas twenty percent is allowed. We believe this is mainly due to our rear-facing garage scenario, which requires a lot of driveway. Our driveway currently accounts for over twelve percent of our total lot coverage. Our existing driveway is more square footage as our entire house footprint. We consider changing our driveway, our garage to a front entrance, which would also require variance, but significantly reduce the lot coverage. But it wasn't feasible due to both the cost and the fact that the front of our garage has a low plate height and a sloped ceiling, so therefore standard garage door wouldn't fit. But we believe we have reduced the impact of our additions as much as possible. We've built over existing patio and driveway area. And we've removed driveway turnaround space to reduce the overall increase in lot coverage. We believe we've been incent, we've been sensitive with our proposal to minimize the impact of our additions. We believe our variances both fulfill a C one and C two, um, variance. Hold on, let me just remove these. Oops, so I pressed the wrong button. Okay. Oops, stop sharing. There we go. Um, we believe we have the hardship of a slightly undersized lot and a rear-facing garage, which creates the need for a lot of driveway and previous surface. We also believe that our proposal falls under a C two variance, no negative criteria. We believe our addition doesn't create any negative effects on our property or neighboring properties and enhances the neighborhood satisfying a C two variance. The addition is one story minimal to achieve the goals by utilizing interior space more efficiently and is well screened to the only two neighbors that we have. Doesn't block the light air view to any neighboring properties and the increase in lot coverage nineteen square feet is extremely minimal. In conclusion, for all of these reasons, we believe our proposal is a positive addition to the neighborhood and we hope the board looks favorably upon our request. Thank you.
All right, let me just jump in and ask a question, uh, because the existing is at twenty-five point one, so it's about twelve hundred and sixty-three square feet over what's, uh, required or permitted. I I presume that when the, when this house was built, it was conforming or was it not? Or did it predate zoning where, when it was originally constructed? As is?
Uh, I'm not really sure. I mean, there's, again, there was a lot of driveway. I I don't know whether. The the zoning was different when the house was built and the lot coverage requirement either didn't exist or was more lenient. Um, I'm not really sure how it got there.
Do you know when the house was built, more or less?
Sorry, say that again.
Do you know when the house was built?
Uh, like nineteen sixty-two, according to the tax records.
Okay.
And you, would you know if there was any additions to the house since it was originally constructed?
Um, Jake and Allison, is that, is the sunroom original to the house, do you know?
Yes, uh, we can't speak to the previous owners, but since we've been here, we have not put on any additions.
Yeah, and we don't, we think the sun porch was original to the house, but we're not aware of any additions.
It had the same carpet as the dining room, so we figured.
Yeah, I mean, that's the only space that I could see could could have been, you know, separate just because it's that sort of one story and off to the end of the house. I mean, everything else is sort of integral and I can't imagine would have been an addition. So now I think it's fairly original.
You know, what and, um, what, what is the roof area that's being added? How much of the square footage that's being added in terms of roof area that you've been dropping?
We are adding. Uh, three hundred and three square foot of, um, building coverage.
So that, that's your, um. Your new, that's the one-story addition? Yeah, okay.
Do you know where the roof leaders go? Do they go in the ground to daylight or how does that work?
Is anything tied underground or does it all just disperse on on ground on upgrade?
It is, uh, disperses into the yard and we've never had a problem with it.
So everything that grade, it's not tying into anything underground?
How about the driveway? There's a lot of paving there. Does that run down to the street? How does that work?
It does not run to the street. The, uh, property actually tilts very slightly towards the back. So water that, uh, comes off the roof, uh, on the back of the house, uh, drains out into the backyard.
How about the driveway? Where does that drain? The driveway.
Uh, the front driveway?
Well, yeah, and the big paved area in the back for the garage.
Oh, that's what, sorry, that's what I mean. Any water coming off of the, like the garage roof, for instance, onto the driveway, filters out into the backyard.
It goes both, okay.
Yeah, if if you look at the site plan on sheet one, it's actually also a topo plan. So you can see that the slope is actually gradual to the back of the property. So like the driveway at the corner of the house is at elevation one ninety-nine. And the driveway at the back by the turnarounds at one ninety-eight, so it's gradually sloping towards the backyard.
Okay, yeah, you're right. I see that.
Cindy, may I ask, this very compelling letter, I really loved it because it just kind of strategically laid out. The applicant's thought process and exhausting, you know, different workarounds. And they alluded to even looking at other properties. And so, I mean, it was really agonizing, it seems, the time that they put into to make this plan work. And forgive me if you mention this, but it alludes to removal of some of the asphalt driveway. And I see that reflected here in the zoning table. And so, did you speak to that already? I'm so sorry. I think that's just part of the project, right?
As part of our attempt to not increase lot coverage, um, or increase it as minimally as possible. We basically put our addition over the existing patio. We were, we're remaking a new patio, but smaller than the old patio and we're removing, um, that turnaround area of the driveway to reduce the size of the driveway.
Got it. And that's still going to be functional for the applicant because I know that that's even a challenge to turn, you know, in the driveway.
We're very good drivers.
Okay. You have enough of a jog left, right?
I think you can actually back up. There's quite a lot of room to back up and then turn around in that driveway.
Exactly.
It it seems like that that extra part, that extra spot is more for parking. Not necessarily used as a turnaround. Um, I, I have to say that, um, I really like the plan and I think that. That it improves the appearance of the house. However, I am concerned about the more than twelve hundred square feet over. On the, um. Impervious coverage because in effect, your lot is a conforming lot. It's all but conforming. It's over ninety-eight percent. Of what needs to be. And, um. I was wondering about whether, um, in the. It as much as you're adding a deck. Do you really need a patio? You know, because, uh, I can see why you might want the walk from the garage and and the back. All of that makes sense to me. And I, and I think that the plan is a really good one, but it's a lot of. Extra coverage.
Can I jump in for a sec? Uh, and Cindy knows the plans better than I do. So Cindy, correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe the, the deck area that we're speaking about, much like the extension over the driveway, is also covering. Previously covered areas. It's eating up sort of some of our existing patio area so that we're not adding any additional space. Cindy, would you agree with that?
About both the deck, um, and the new patio are basically over what was the patio.
And actually, if I could just add one more thing, Cindy had the great idea that the deck isn't, it isn't so much as a, as a additional deck area. But it's a, it's a space that allows us to get from the house down to the outside. It's sort of a extended. Walkway area and less of a expansive deck area.
Part of the issue is if you look at the first floor plan, we have doors that come from the breakfast room. And doors that come from the office that are sort of perpendicular to each other. So by code, we would need to have a three-foot platform. Sort of wrapping around the back of that anyway. And then we would need steps. So at the end of the day, we're actually probably only adding a little bit more to make that a usable deck rather than a giant platform. Um, so that was kind of the rationale there was that the deck is kind of, and also the door from the sunroom. So we're kind of incorporating doors from three different sides, um, onto that deck base, um, just to be able to get down to the patio, really. I I think at the end of the day, the catch falls like, weren't really looking for a deck, but because of the grade change and because of the multiple doors coming out of the back of the house. It kind of forced a a deck so that we could step, step down to the patio.
Well, the deck doesn't count as that impervious coverage, does it?
No, it doesn't.
Uh, what I was saying about was the patio. I mean, uh, you, it almost, are you, are you saying that you cannot use the deck in the way you might use a patio?
So what I'm saying is that if. If we were just to do a stoop, it would wrap around all three sides and be almost as big as the deck anyway. Um, so the deck is really more of a transition to get from.
Now, the, the issue is the, the coverage is twenty-five. The deck is, is irrelevant to that issue.
It's the, it's the patio.
Much, but you're not reducing it at all. I think that's. Question concern that you're already at twenty-five percent, you're quite a bit over.
By the same token, though, we're adding a three hundred square foot addition. We're only increasing it by nineteen square feet.
Right, but then what's the hard, I mean, I think the question is, yeah, you're only, but you're still, it's still way over.
Well, if it was a.
Proving it is, I guess that's the question. Can you improve it? If you can't, then that's, that's the, the issue. That's.
There's, there's, there's another way to ask, ask the question, I suppose, and that is, obviously, there's some concern about the, the impervious coverage. Most of the work you're talking about is across the back of the house. It's going to involve some degree of excavation and everything. I guess one question is, would you consider as part of that excavation, putting in some stormwater management? So you can capture some of the water coming off the back of the house, simply to bring the effective percentage of the impervious coverage. Down to something a little closer to what the requirement is.
Absolutely. I think if we could tie the downspouts of the new addition on the back of the house into, um, a seepage pit and come to an agreement with. Engineering to do that, I think, um, I mean, maybe I'm speaking for the catch falls and they can, uh, they can chime in here too. But I think they'd probably prefer that over losing the patio because the patio is important to them.
Well.
Yeah, I think we, you know, obviously, sorry.
Let's think about a couple of things, okay? Because as I, as I look at this, I think it's good. Well, first of all. We don't expect you to conform, right? So we're not looking to reduce your square footage so that conforms, right? We recognize there are some hardships here in terms of rear entry garage and, you know, run does run up your impervious coverage to get back there. We completely recognize that, but we're just looking for positive criteria to offset the negative criteria, which is. You know, the magnitude of the variance. And then to reduce the impervious where, where it's reasonable and possible. So you've, you've already volunteered to reduce that little turnaround that was in your back, you know, that kind of stuck around the back of the yard there.
Yeah.
But, but when I, when I look at the, the driveway itself, as you walk, walk into the backyard, it goes back pretty far. And then there's a basketball hoop over there. And, you know, by my rough measurements, it's got to be something like sixty feet deep back there. My point is, can you trim back that driveway a little bit more, give back some square footage there to get the magnitude of the variance down a little bit? And then also given, given again, the magnitude of what's over the required or permitted. Um, it would make sense. To, to do some stormwater management to help mitigate that, that help recharge and so forth. So we're looking for, you know, some concessions to, to help the board get to where it needs to be.
I think reducing the depth of the driveway might, um, being as we've also taken the sort of parking space turnaround space away. Might, um, end up making the drive a lot more difficult to use because you need about thirty to thirty-five feet for backup space and they have fifty. Um, so what's nice about that is they can actually park two cars and still be able to get a car in and sort of turn around and get back out. It's like, I know when I go there, you know, park there and then I sort of park behind them and I can kind of do a twirl and and still get out. Whereas I think as soon as you pull that driveway in, that's not going to be possible, um, which then makes taking that turnaround. You know, you know what I mean? Makes that a little bit more difficult. Um, so that's just my opinion on the driveway. So a-again, I'll let the catch falls sort of, uh, correct me if I'm wrong there.
No, a hundred percent.
Yeah, no, we, so, you know, I, I park, we park a car in the garage, obviously, and to come in, you know, I do it without this turnaround spot. I'm going to be able to do it, but we do have, we, we have a teenager who drives, you know, three, three cars. And I, if we do park two cars towards the front, and I think it would be extremely. Sorry, towards the back of the driveway by the basketball hoop. It, I think it'd be extremely difficult, especially with, without the turnaround spot to try to pull in. And be able to maneuver to be able to get into the rear facing garage.
Yeah, because, you know, when I, when I just take a rough measurement from the corner of the house to the back of the, back of that, um. Driveway there, I'm getting closer to seventy feet.
No, I, I just did it on the CAD file and it's, it, um, from the face of the garage. To the, the rear curb is about fifty-two feet.
Okay, look, I'm just trying to come up with ideas. I'm not telling you what to do, but.
No, not at all. And you're, you're. The board's expertise on this subject is far excedars. We can only speak anecdotally for what it's like to actually be in the house. Um, we love this house and hopefully we'll be here for a very long time. We're just looking to improve on a house that was built in the sixties and to bring it up to modern standards. So anything that we suggest and ask the board's, um, you know, stamp of approval on is only our, our. Rooted in our own experiences from being here day to day.
Right. Well, I think what the board is saying is, can you give back any more additional square footage and, and are, are you willing to, to? Uh, the, provide some level of stormwater management.
Yeah, and that's why I said, I think, um, if we did a seepage pit and tied the new, the, the downspouts in the rear of the house to a seepage pit, that that would be, um. I think it would be beneficial to the, the property and also obviously help minimize the impact of the additional lot coverage.
Yeah. What about the first part of the chairman's question? You didn't answer that.
Um, a-again, I, I'm really not sure that there's many places that we can remove more lot coverage and not lose the function. Um, of both the driveway and, you know, the enjoyment of the property with the patio.
Yes, a question. If you were to, if not counting the walkway part of the, the new patio, how large is that circular patio, patio square?
The patio is roughly from the deck steps to the sort of furthest part of the curve. Is about fifteen feet. And from left to right, the sort of longest area of the oval is about twenty-three feet.
Okay. So what's that five forty-five, something like that? What does that work out to be?
Full circle. Um, so if you look at the zoning chart, uh, the actual patio area. With the walkway is, is four hundred and eighty-seven square feet with the walkway.
All right, so I'm, what I'm putting out there to move this along is maybe we should just focus on stormwater management and, and would the board be amenable to? Having stormwater management to the, to the degree where, uh, all the leaders to the back of the house are tied into drywall?
Yeah, I think that would make sense.
Yeah.
Right, so everybody. How's everybody feel? Okay?
Yeah, I think that would give me the positive criteria that I really am looking for.
Okay, okay, yeah, I, I don't want to remove impervious where. Doesn't make a lot of sense, right? It's got to be reasonable. And, uh, we're trying to deal with twelve hundred. deal with 1,263 feet overage. And how could we do that and, and do it in a consistent way, the way we operate as a board? So so are the catch poles agreeable to, um, one or more seepage pits, you know, you guys could, you would work this out, you and your experts would work it out with Mr. Harrington, our board engineer as to what that's, what that seepage pit configuration would be and where it'd be located and so forth.
Yeah, definitely. Cindy, do you concur?
Yeah, I think that's the, the best way to tackle this. Um, like I said, I think if you start giving up additional lot coverage, you start sacrificing on utility.
Yeah, we are 100% behind that. Great idea.
Mr. Harrington, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
No, Mr. Chairman, I think it's been, um, well covered by, uh, by the board members and, um, the applicant's architect, but also that, um, if there's any regrading that needs to be done, we need to see a grading plan. It doesn't appear that there's much, um, much issue with that, with the, with the mild grade of the property. It only drops about two feet in probably over 100 feet. Um, so it's a very mild slope, so it's not going to be concentrating runoff. Um, but I, I do concur with the, um, with the board requirement for, for, uh, drainage improvements associated with this project.
Okay. So is the board okay with all this? Because when I'm
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to open it up to the public at this point. So, uh, looking at the attendees, is there any hands raised over there? This would be an opportunity for the public to ask questions or make a statement either in support or opposition to the application. Doesn't look like there is, right?
No, I do not see any hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
So I'm going to close the public portion. So the catch poles, you have an opportunity, if you'd like, just to make a closing statement of your presentation before we move to deliberation.
I'd just like to say thank you for your time today. I know the board has a lot of work that you guys tackle, um, day to day, week to week, month to month, especially in these trying times. Uh, and we greatly appreciate you even considering our application. Uh, we love Madison and we're looking forward to being here for a long time.
Thank you very much. All right. So let's go to deliberation. Uh, why don't we try Roger? Would you like to speak first? Can't hear you, Roger.
You're muted, Roger.
Sorry about that. I apologize. Um, I, I always concern when I don't see a real hardship and we're increasing the impervious coverage, but, um, I just see the great benefit of this is we, we've lost so many 1950s and 60s houses over the years by knockdowns and, uh, this is kind of getting to that point where it almost could be knocked down and, and fit. Um, so I see maintaining the house and modernize it, fitting in with the neighborhood instead of putting a new house that does not pin in with the neighborhood. I, I see that as a great benefit. Um, that's what uh, I see as the biggest benefit here. Uh, so even though we're increasing the coverage, you know, we're, we're trying to recollect all the water. Uh, I, I just see a great benefit to modernizing this house and maintaining it and keeping it with the character neighborhood. So I, I just see it as a benefit and I'm fair because of that.
Thank you. Helen?
Um, I really like the plan. I'm sorry, we can't reduce the coverage, but on balance, I tend to agree with what I've heard. And I just want to add how much I enjoyed your backyard. It is really beautiful.
Thank you very much. It was nice to meet you today.
Okay, Anthony?
Um, yeah, I'm in favor. Uh, you know, uh, impervious is over. It's going oh, even a little bit further, just barely, but hopefully the stormwater management will, you know, curb that even more to get closer to the 20% allowed in effect. So, uh, I'm in favor.
Very soon.
Just to echo everything that's said and thank the applicant for all the work that went into this application and for your willingness to work with the board to really kind of put this over the finish line in addressing the stormwater management considerations. So thank you.
Jim?
A nice project, and I think the concession on the stormwater management puts it over the line. I'm in favor.
Okay, I'm in favor of the application as well. Appreciate, uh, you know, carrying back the impervious to, um, to the degree you could. And also the stormwater management's important. Uh, you know, there's sort of a war on stormwater management going on in this town, and we always got to make sure that whatever we're doing on one property doesn't have a negative impact to other properties, even if it's the park next door. So, um, appreciate your willingness to, uh, work on that with our borough engineer. So I'm in favor of it. So, uh, so Gary, you have the condition?
Yeah, the one condition about all roof, rear roof leaders to be, uh, go to dry well for, uh, approval of borough engineer or board engineer uh, to extend reasonable and practical.
Uh huh.
Have you had it that way? If it just doesn't work, then you're probably okay. The engineer determines that.
Okay. All right. So maybe we get a, an app, uh, for approval motion, please.
Well moved.
Second.
Okay, Jim? Roger?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. DiIono?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Dr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Salco?
Yes.
Chairman Santoro?
Yes.
And Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Okay. Well, congratulations. Your application is approved. Wish
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for coming tonight. Take care now.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. So everybody, we're going to take a little break. Let's call it a five minute break. Uh, video and microphone off and come back in five minutes. Okay?
And why don't we just announce, uh, there are some correspondence that the Ronco application is the last one.
Yes.
Somebody in the, was asking, they were here for that. We didn't get to it yet. It's, uh, Molinaro and then Ronco.
I don't see anyone here from Molinaro, Gary, but Anna Ronco is on, uh, is on wait.
Well, there were somebody's, we were getting text, I saw it saying, I'm here for that.
It says, uh, there's three people in the attendees.
Somebody is apparently is wanting to know if we, we got to that. We didn't yet, but we're intending to.
Yeah, there's two more. I'm sorry, there's, there's two more app for the public. There's two more applications, 024 Molinaro and Ronca 025. So we're taking a five minute break.
Then we'll get you back. Yeah.
Yeah, if you're here for something, hear some other applications. It's not, it's not tonight.
And Roca was 17 Chapel Street. Molinaro is, uh, King's Road.
King's Road, yeah.
So we'll get to them.
All right, we're back in five.
Well, well, thanks a lot.
All right, take care.
Yes.
Okay, terrible news. Okay, so, uh, this meeting is back in session. And, uh, we are moving to the next application, which is case number Z21024 David and Lisa Molinaro Block 3901 Lot 38, uh, King's Road. Applicants are seeking permission to construct a one story addition covered patio compressor on concrete pit and, and a stormwater management system in our family residence. Principal building coverage, bad impervious block coverage and minimum rear yard setback. So.
Mr. Adesso is here for the applicant chairman.
Uh, he, their attorney or the, is the applicant on?
Uh, he's trying to get on right now. Um, I'm the architect for the project.
All right. Well, we, we definitely need the applicant. Does he have the link? Then this story link and know where to get it?
Uh, I s- I sent him the link that I used, um, and he also tried getting through the uh, public link and apparently he's having issues.
Okay, um, yeah, because there's also the, and that's the link. Did you pick that link up off the board calendar?
He just left it.
Okay. Okay.
Ah, there he is.
Okay, guys, we're going to need, uh, cameras on for this. Okay, well, I think we're all set. Mr. Molinaro, just in time.
Hey, Dan.
Okay, okay. Uh, Gary? Gary, you're muted.
I'm sorry. Okay, let me, uh, swear, Mr. Molinaro, Mr. Adessa. Could you both raise your right hand and do something? The story testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
Yes. Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, so, uh, uh, we'll mark what's been filed first and then we'll proceed. We have a June 1, uh, to 2021 denial letter for Mr. Buckaloo. That will be A1.
Um, Mr., Mr. Hall, I do see a revision date.
Oh, I'm sorry, 230, I'm sorry, you're right. And, uh, let's see, so also the survey, ABC surveys, Andrew Clark, dated 4/5/21. It could be A1. We have uh, two sheets of photographs, uh, of the property that can be collectively A2. And an architect, a site plan, uh, it's photo site plan. And architectural plan from uh, Paradigm Architect, Architecture dated 5/21/21. That can be a great. And I think that covers what I have. If anything else comes up, we can identify it as you go along.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Molinaro, would you like to begin? This is a little overview, perhaps?
Hey, we're saying, I'm sorry, it's hard to hear with this. My laptops are the best.
Uh, no problem. I'm just giving you an opportunity. If you'd like to open things up and say a few words or present.
Yeah. Tony, do you want?
I defer to your architect if you choose.
Yeah, Tony, if you want to, sorry, that'd be great.
We just need to have you on because you're not an attorney. You need to be representing yourself.
Sure.
You don't have to say anything more beyond that.
Um, let me sort of describe the project. Uh, right now we have, uh, in the rear yard, we have an existing patio. And we also have a very small screen and porch, um, that obviously is, is very difficult to sort of use by its overall dimensions. Um, the, uh, the existing rear porch, uh, which is screened in and enclosed, uh, that's going to be removed and we're replacing that with a family room. A little bit larger. Um, and then we're going to be replacing the existing patio um, with actually a smaller square foot patio, uh, but that is going to be covered. So, uh, by lieu of that being covered, um, we sort of fall into the building coverage uh, sort of slot because of that, uh, issue. Um, variances that we are looking for are for, um, rear yard setback. Um, and we're also looking for building coverage. And we're also looking for impervious lot coverage. Um, and so uh, with the square footages, what we're sort of doing is swapping some of the areas from the actual uh, existing patio and sort of putting it into the new family room. Uh, and like I said, putting roof over the entire area sort of throws it all under the building coverage. Um, sort of slot first, and then the impervious coverage secondly. Um, so due to the size of the lot or the lack of size of the lot, which is only 6,000 square feet and the, the minimum lot required is 9375. Um, so that pushes us over, um, into the, into the limits of, of requirements. Now, the rear yard setback, um, we're looking for 32.6 feet, which 40 feet is required. The existing, uh, patio comes out to approximately that dimension. So we're not protruding any further, uh, into the rear yard as what the existing patio is. Um, so we're, we're not, we're not exasperating it any more than, than what the existing location was. Um, the coverage, basically, we're, we're looking to go from, uh, 14.9 to 21.4. And in the building coverage, as I said, that's in lieu of having the roof over the patio. Uh, so that's one of the reasons why it's pushing the numbers up a bit. Uh, and the same thing with, um, the impervious coverage, um, which is not nearly as, as, uh, is over, was over the limit as the building coverages, um, because we're allowed 30%. We're only 32.2 with the proposed, um, where the building coverage, we're allowed 15 and we're at 21.4 proposed. Um, but with, with this, uh, this proposition here, um, everything is to the rear yard. We're not intruding into the side yards or anything like that. Um, and as it was right now, the existing screened in and as it was right now, the existing screened in porch that's there was actually over the rear yard setback. Um, so even though we are intruding further, um, we did have sort of an existing condition that already is there. Um, our side yard setbacks are not an issue. Um, obviously our front yard setback runs through the existing house. Um, so that gives you, uh, a little bit of an inkling of these different portions in the size of the lot versus what the requirement is. Um, most of the neighborhood, especially in this side of the street, the houses are very similar, the lots are very similar. They do vary a bit on the other side. Um, there's, there's a much larger, also larger lot across the street. There's an empty lot. Um, they vary a bit as they go through, but this side of the street is very, very similar, uh, as you go through. Some of them have been expanded, um, from their original uh, build, um, and some of them have not, um, but overall volume is basically very similar. Um, the overall volume of this building and this proposition, um, doesn't really increase that much. Um, all the visualization is from the rear. Um, and from basically from the, um, uh, from, from the street side, uh, straight on, there, there's no visual impact from sort of the angle, uh, from, from the one side. Um, you're, you're catching a little bit of a roof and on the other side, you're catching a little bit of a roof, which was already there. Um, so the visual impact to the rest of the neighborhood is minimized that way. Um, now the impervious coverage, um, we are basically addressing that by putting, um, a seepage pit, uh, stormwater management section in the rear yard. Um, and that has already been calculated out. We discussed it with, uh, zoning officer. Um, well, he does calculate it out by the state regulations, uh, for the square footages of the roof. All the leaders for the new area will be going out there. And, um, when we do the calculations, what we also do is add a 40% increase for overflow. Um, which obviously, um, is very important with, um, the sort of the deluge rains we get now. Uh, and, and what we have in the past. Um, so what we, what we don't, um, with that extra uh, volume of water that we can contain, um, we don't get that overflow of the gutter sort of spewing out all over the, over the yard because the, the dry wells filled. Um, and, um, you know, with the usage of this, uh, you know, with the, the original dimensions of the original screen and porch, it made it very difficult to use the room because it was only about eight and a half feet wide. Um, so it got very, very tight to be able to do that. So the, the mentions that we have on here are much more usable. Uh, the connection to the rear yard and the covered patio, just because this end of the house is facing south, so it does get a lot of sun. Um, so to be able to control that and have the, the covered patio, uh, to have some place to be able to go outside and then get to the rear yard, um, at the same time. Um, and I think we've accomplished all those without, uh, impacting the neighborhood, uh, or impacting property dramatically.
We're having questions? Yeah, I thought it looked pretty straightforward myself.
I had one quick question if I could. The raised patio. How much is it raised? Because I didn't see any steps on the outside.
It's only, it's only approximately eight inches off of grain.
Okay, so there's no need for steps?
No.
To get to the yard?
Correct.
Okay, related question on, on that also, on the, uh, rear elevation on your plan.
Uh huh.
I was confused by the roof line on the, over the covered patio. What's that?
Okay, um, well, obviously we have a gable roof over the, um, the new family room.
I understand that part, yeah.
Is we're projecting a shed roof that goes, that is, that's a lower slope that goes out to cover the patio.
Uh huh.
And that's basically to avoid, um, any issues with the windows in the upper stories.
Uh huh.
And so between that roof and is there a, a building facade area in between there? That's what I'm looking at, that little triangle area. What is, is that?
Yeah, we're, we're going, we're posing a flat ceiling over the, um, over the, over the patio. And there'll be a little tiny bit of a triangle siding.
Uh huh.
Top to fill in, to fill in that area.
So those, the horizontal lines, they're, they're building facade? Uh, that's what?
Yes, uh huh.
And they're out flush with the, with the facade for the addition, is that correct?
Right, yeah, the addition, the addition, the eve line that you're seeing, which is the angles.
Yeah.
Projecting a few inches forward just to give that more definition than the, than the secondary roof over the patio.
Okay, that's why I just.
Nothing substantial on now.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, what I'd like to do then is, uh, open it up to the public, see if there's any members of the public that have any questions or want to make a statement, either in support or opposition.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a couple of comments?
Of course.
As well, thank you. Um, the stormwater management calculations were performed using a methodology which is standard in the industry, the rational method. Um, which is a little different than the borough's, um, methodology. I would like an opportunity, and I did do a quick check and it looks like it might be a little shy of where the storage volume might be if you just utilize the borough's methodology. So I just like, you know, if the board's going to act favorably, that a condition be included, uh, to allow the engineering department to check uh, the applicant's architectures, architects' calculations, uh, to compare them with the borough's methodology.
So Dennis, worst case, they might have to make it a little bit bigger. Is that the, the bottom line?
That's what it looked like when I did.
That door die is just adjust.
No, it's correct, correct. Um, I also note that there's no grade shown on the site plan. And I want to make sure that there's no, again, no adverse impact to adjacent properties. Um, I have not visited the site and I apologize, uh, for that, but, uh, just to can you include that as a condition as well that I'd like to see, um, some grades included on a, a building permit set of plans um, to ensure there's no a- adverse impact to adjacent properties.
Is that all right, Mr. Mullenaro and Mr. Adesso?
Uh, we definitely adjust the, uh, the stormwater management, uh, to accommodate the town's requirements. Um, and the lot itself, uh, the surrounding area is fairly level. Um, there's not really any major grades. Um, you know, uh, I don't know whether Mr. Mullenaro, uh, can take the expense of actually having a topographic, um, survey done of the property considering his level, but what we could do is go out and do a sort of rudimentary, uh, you know, leveling off the foundation line, um, just to get basic sort of rough spot elevations around the property if that would be accept- acceptable.
That would be.
I have, Dennis, I, I noted that the yard slopes back toward the house.
Oh.
Yard slopes back toward the house.
From the rear yard slopes?
Yeah. And, um, I don't, uh, I mean, there, I have no figures, but I uh, also there's, um, a concrete slab. It's about six by eight feet, six feet by eight feet in the back left-hand corner of that lot. Um, what does that do and does it do anything? Can it come out?
Uh, Dave, was that an old shed?
Yeah, when I bought the property, it was like that. I think it used to be an old shed, so maybe prior surveys, uh, it may have been there at one point in time. That's my thinking at least.
Well, the survey shows a concrete pad.
Right.
The current survey, and that's what she's asking for. And that should be, that, that doesn't look like that was canvas coverage, which it is. But I guess the question is if it's not serving any purpose, can it be removed? That's the question.
I mean, I was, ideally, I was planning on putting a, a shed there at one point in time because I have no space. So that would be the ideal, if I could do that, since I.
Well, let me ask you a question. If you were to put a shed there, it has to be five feet off the, uh, the property line. It, it seems like it's close to the property line. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, it is. Uh, there might be like a foot right by that, that fence area.
See, I, I, you, you do have a real hardship because of the, uh, size of the lot. Um, I don't think you could, if, if it's true that that pad is close to the line, you can't put a shed there anyway.
Gotcha.
Yeah, the requirement's five feet from side and rear, so.
So can you, can you just pull that pad? Remove it?
Yeah, I mean, if need be, then you could always do that.
I think we're saying that's need be.
Yeah, it should have been canvas coverage and it's not, so it shouldn't be there, I, I guess is the answer. And what about this, while we're talking to stone barbecue, is that functional?
Uh, that is no longer there, actually.
Oh, okay, well, good.
So that helps out.
It shows it, so.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, we, we'd like to have you as a condition to remove the concrete pad.
Okay.
And confirm that the stone padded, and I think back to Dennis, probably, it sounds like this walk in site, he could get a feel for it.
I, I would agree.
Some basic concepts, grading, yeah.
Okay, so, um, anything else? Guys, before I go to the public, I don't think there's anybody in the public that's going to talk, but is there any member of the public that, that out there that wants to make a statement, either in support or opposition or ask a question?
There's not much of them.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'll, I'll give this, uh, I'll give an opportunity for the applicant if they want to make any final statements to close out the presentation.
Uh, no statements on my end.
Okay, good. Um, why don't, why don't we go to the, to the board for deliberation, Helen?
I don't think I have much to add. I mean, um, I'm in favor of the plan. I think I've said about what I need to. Thank you.
Okay, Anthony?
Yeah, I think it's a good plan and you definitely have the hardship. Um, if the lot was conforming, looks like you'd have 13.5% building coverage and 20% impervious where, you know, you'd be allowed 30, so you know, the hardship's certainly there and, um, I think it's a good plan and you're going to have the stormwater management to mitigate, um, the impervious, so I'm in favor.
Hmm. Okay, Mary Sue?
Yep, uh, uh, exactly to the point of everything that was said and just we'd appreciate it if you vetted with, um, Dennis, the plan, and I appreciate that the, um, the stormwater management plan was teed up and delivered so nicely. But if the, the borough could have an opportunity to review and unfortunately get your sledgehammer out, if you could remove that pad uh, and it doesn't conform, it's of no use anyway, that would make the application more compelling and really, really put it over the finish line. So thanks.
Sure, no problem.
Roger?
Yeah, I'm in favor of it. It's amazing that, uh, is undersized a lot is all the, uh, it conforms pretty much completely as is, uh, so um, it certainly is a good plan and, um, the hardship is there, so I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it as well for the same reasons that's everybody stated. I believe there is a hardship and it's a, it's a modest group of variances there, so, so I'm good with it. So with that, um, you have the, Gary, you have the two, the two conditions, right?
Yeah, the, uh, just the, uh, uh, board, board engineer to, to verify the stormwater sizing calculations and and any necessary adjustment to be made and also to, uh, you know, check the, uh, confirm the absence based on the, uh, lay of the land of any stormwater impact.
All right, remove the pad.
And that, yeah, and the second condition, move the concrete pad.
Okay, great, perfect. All right, so can I get a motion to approve with those conditions?
Oh. Second.
Okay, Helen's second, I think Roger, you were first, right? So, uh, roll call please.
DiIono.
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Dr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Salco?
Yes.
Chairman Santoro?
Yes.
And Mr. Flosser has been excused.
Perfect, all right, congratulations, your application is approved. Wish you a lot of luck, best wishes and everything.
Thank you guys so much, appreciate it.
Okay, have a good, thanks for hanging in there. Okay, so next application is going to be Ronca. This is case number Z 21025, Chapel Street, applicant is seeking permission to construct a one-story addition, removal of portion of existing asphalt through driveway and dry well in our force, will family to family zone. Required release from maximum principal building coverage and maximum impervious block. Okay.
Hi, sorry, I'm trying to get my cameras to work.
Okay.
I have to use my phone.
Is there anybody else we need to promote at this point? She dropped into attendee, so.
I think she left and came back.
She's an attendee right now, okay. These are the attendees.
Try again.
There we go.
Okay, this is gonna be my phone, unfortunately, but.
As long as we can see you, that's what we have to do.
Uh, yeah, that works fine. We got a good phone there. Okay.
Okay.
So, um, it's just you, right?
Um, it's, yeah, just me, my architect is joining. I have two of my neighbors here to provide moral support. Hi. Can you see me? Hi.
Yes, we'll give you an opportunity to speak later on.
Okay.
All right, so it's, um.
Let me swear, Ms. Ronca in.
Okay.
Do you raise your right hand? Do some, we swear testimony about to give will be the truth.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's mark what was filed and then we can move ahead. We have a zoning denial letter, June 22, 2021. That will be B1. And I guess architectural. Architectural plans from Hayrick, Hayrick Architects, June 4. Yeah, one's dated June 14, one's June 9. One's June 6. There, there are three sheets. One is a survey, the other two are, they're all from Hayrick Architects. They're labeled 1, 2, and 3. So they can collectively be A2. You have that, Dennis?
I do have that.
Yeah, sheet 1 is dated June 14, sheet 2 is dated June 6, and sheet 3 is dated June 6, so anyway. As we all have the same one, that's what's important, so.
Um, are we good?
Yeah, yeah, that's what we have for the moment.
Would you like to make a statement or begin the presentation?
Uh, so it's over me? Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, okay, so I'm, I'm, so I'm proposing a two and a half story addition. The removal of portion of the existing asphalt driveway, basically the addition is on top of where the driveway is now. Um, as well as a, a dry well for the water, for the water rundown. Um, that I'm requesting variances for max principal building coverage and max impervious lot coverage. Um, the impervious lot coverage will not change from the existing, um, since the addition will go right over where the driveway is now. Um, so, uh, so I moved, so just to give background, I moved, um, to Madison through, um, in 2017 with my husband and just back then, it was just me and my husband. And since then, I've had two kids. So I have a one-year-old and three-year-old. And I want one more. Um, so room is becoming an issue. Um, so currently in my house, the rooms, there are little. Um, so I just wanted to do something to make, um, my house more comfortable, um, to make the rooms a little bit bigger. And to add another bathroom, um, and, uh, and to have a one-car garage. And I, I took a walk around the neighborhood. And most people in, in the neighborhood around me have one-car garages. Um, so, um, yeah, I mean, this isn't too big of an addition. It's a small lot. Um, I, I really like the area. Um, we, we originally, um, chose this place because it's right next to the train to downtown. Uh, my husband works in the city. Uh, it's right, it's literally right across from Dodge Field. It's on Chapel Street, right across from Dodge Field, so um, it, it's nice to be able to take my kids to the park and just like walk across the street. Um, so I, I really would like to stay in this area on this street in this house, um, if at all possible. Um, just trying to see if there's anything else I want to say. Um, just trying to see if there's anything else I wanna say. Um, yeah, I, um, that's it. And of course, the battery in my phone is low. That's great.
Okay, so, um, I visited, I visited the property and, and I can see that you had a driveway along the side of the house. And you're just gonna put an addition on that with a garage and second floor?
Yes.
Okay, and then you're gonna address the storm water management by putting in a dry well?
Exactly. Yeah.
Okay, and by, by what I'm seeing here is you have a, a lot that's about half the size of what it should be.
Yep, it's pretty tiny.
Okay. Um, well, we'll let the board ask some questions. Um, it looked pretty straightforward to me. Anything from anybody?
I, I, I had one question. I was confused about the, the plan shows a twenty-five-foot front setback and when I looked at the table, I thought it was supposed to be thirty. I didn't know where that came from and.
Okay, um, yeah.
I don't know if that was discussed or not, if you calculate the average, but I didn't see that calculation.
Yes, it's on, it's on one of the plans at the bottom. It, 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 you did, the architect did put it there. So, um, you did a front setback analysis of other houses nearby. Um, and, and that's, that's why we came to the twenty-five. Um, it's on, I'm just trying to see where, where it is. It's on one of them.
I didn't see it, but even if it was twenty-five, they'd set, the follow-up is that if you have a front-facing garage, it's supposed to be set back an additional five feet. The, the ordinance was changed a couple of years ago with front-facing garages. I mean, you're allowed to have one, only one in, in this zone, uh.
I don't think, Gary, I don't, I don't have the room for that.
Yeah, well, then it, it's a variance. I'm not saying they can't do it. I'm just saying it wasn't called out, that's all. I didn't, I didn't see, I mean, it's sexy. Cause I was, I, that vaguely popped into my head. I, I was double checking and it's, uh, yeah, section thirty-two E three is attached garages in the R one-two in the, in the R zones. Three, uh, well, they're limited to fourteen feet. They're good with that. It's twelve, I think I saw somewhere the width, um. But section three D facing a public street, set back a minimum of an additional, additional five feet from the front building line. If it's greater than twelve feet in width, three feet if it's twelve feet or less, uh.
Well, it is set, it, it is set back, isn't it?
Well, it's additional five feet from the front building line.
I think it is.
Oh, is it? Okay, you're right.
Yeah, oh, yes, it is. Yes, it is.
I was looking at the setback line.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, it's, it's set back more than that.
Right, I mean, if you say it should be more than twenty-five, but the, the building line, I guess, is the house is already there, it's closed, so, okay, we can.
I think we're good with that.
Yeah, okay, that explains it. It just, I hadn't. I was confused by the setback line versus the building line. The building line is the house, that's setback. And I'll, I'll assume at that location that, uh, uh, adjustment down to twenty-five feet is acceptable because, uh, the house, this house is less, much less anyway. This house is at fifteen, so.
Been there.
It's not hard to imagine a twenty-five-foot average. You can't go less than twenty-five. For construction, so, but that's okay, that's fine. That's what I understand it, because I didn't see it. Okay.
Does board have any comments? I just wanna put one thing out there then, um, Ms. Rocka, whether or not, because I, I, I'm trying to remember when I walked up to your house. I don't think you had any coverage over your front stoop.
No, uh, I have like an, I have like an awning, like one of those awnings over my, where I walk.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure you had, couldn't remember whether you had anything there, whether you wanted to put that in there as well.
The plan says it's covered.
It is, okay.
Let me, survey, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I have like an awning, yeah.
Okay, all right, guys, I just wanna make sure we, you know, that's, didn't get that. Okay, I, I didn't have anything, um. So I guess we can go to the public or, um, we have a couple of people. There's nobody in the, in the audience at this point in time, let the record show, but you have two witnesses, am I right?
Yeah.
All right, so this.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, with regard to storm order, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
There's, the dry well is shown on the plans, but there are no calculations or design details provided. Um, so just as a condition that, uh, the design and, uh, location and details be provided in accordance with borough requirements.
Okay, that would be a follow-up then, because of approval, have your architect or expert, uh, interface with borough on that?
Okay.
If there's any questions, Mrs. Rocka, you can have your architect get in touch with my office. We'll, we will walk her through the, walk them through the methodology and, uh, design requirements.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, in terms of the people that we admitted from the public, um, we give them a chance that they would like to say something. We could maybe go to Hillary Ramon?
You don't have to, but you're welcome to.
Oh, hi, I know, I'm sure it's late for you guys. So, um, uh, Anna's neighbor, I've been here four years with her and, um, you guys have helped me with our house. We're twenty-seven Greenwood Ave, so we're three houses down from the, um, you know, big Madison market that they put on the end of my street. Um, and I will say that it's nice because it is a mixed community here, but it's nice to have one-family people. Anna has two kids, the people across the street have kids. My neighbor Paula Locke was great, so there is a mixed community and I love that there are people here who still single-family home, raising kids, even though they're changing the dynamics here with the Madison market going up. And I'm all for Anna doing whatever I can to help her, and I thank you guys again for helping me on our extension, but that being said, I approve.
Thank you. We're always happy to hear from, we're, we're always happy to hear from happy customers.
Ms. Ramon, uh, Ms. Ramon, could I get your address again for the record, please?
I am twenty-seven Greenwood Ave. And I'm three houses down from uh, the Madison market thing that they put up.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, uh, another, uh, uh, person if they'd like to speak.
Hi, I'm Jen Palma. I'm Anna's neighbor. Um, I'm at eighteen Greenwood Avenue. And I support this as well. I love our neighborhood, you know, with Hillary lives across the street and is next door. Um, it's nice to have single-family homes and we all, like, I have two children as well. We're all raising our children in this neighborhood, this beautiful park across the street. So anything that will add value to our neighborhood and make, um, families stay totally in support of that as well.
Perfect, thank you very much for, uh, contributing. Okay, so we're gonna close the public portion, so, uh, Ms. Rocka, if you would like to make any closing statements in your presentation, that would be the time.
Uh, uh, you know, I really love Madison and, um, I, I'm just trying to make, um, my house a little bit more comfortable for, uh, me and my family. Um, I, uh, thank you guys for staying so late and, and doing all of this. Um, and thanks for, uh, listening to my case.
Oh, you're very welcome. Okay, thank you very much. So the presentation is closed. We'll move to deliberation. So, uh, Mary Sue, would you like to go?
Uh, sure, I think it's a, a really wonderful, thoughtful application. You'll get a very nice addition, a proper master, which a mother definitely deserves. Uh, I appreciate your willingness to work with the borough on the storm water management and to bring your architect in. And, and, and that said, your lot definitely has a lot of challenges, but your neighborhood is long on charm. And I think you're just going to make it even more beautiful with this addition, so I am in favor of this.
Helen, would you like to go?
Yeah, um, I'm in favor too.
Anthony?
Same.
Roger?
Yes, this, this is insanely difficult, uh, hardship of a lot there, uh. You know, fifty percent under size and very regular shape. Uh, I'm just grateful people are putting money in and improving this, uh. I'm just outside the two hundred feet my office and I'm just grateful to see people improve in the neighborhood.
Uh, yes, and, uh, I'm, I'm in favor of the application and, uh, I went there and I was very happy to see what was going on in terms of the investment that's going on in the property. Uh, I am sympathetic to the comments that we heard just a few minutes ago about single-family homes and people trying to raise families and I, I, I am somebody who's uh, favorite for single-family homes rather than necessarily two-family for that, for the reasons which is her. So I think it's terrific. I think it's a good application. It takes a house that's very small and I think, um, it works within the dimensions of, of a lot and I think it'll be a great practical solution. So it's awesome. And in, in that area too, picks up your home in that area is, is terrific. So I'm, I'm in favor of it. So we just have one condition, Gary, about the drywall?
Yeah, yeah, though, uh, confirm the adequacy with the borough engineer and make any adjustments if, if appropriate.
Okay, good, good. Um, that's terrific. I, you know, so I just wanna say something with the next step is, you know, I worked on the master plan uh, committee to look at the new master plan and there was a proposal to change a couple of zones, uh, in that area, at least two zones. Uh, to rezone them from single-family to one and two-family and I actually resisted that because I, I felt like it may change the character of where those groupings of homes were, that is, some of the older homes is similar to what we're talking about here, would simply be torn down and probably put in a two-family house as opposed to keeping it a single-family and promote that. There, so I, you know, I just wanted to mention that I did that. I fought that and successfully, I think, in two areas, so. So, uh, with that, uh, I think we need a motion to approve this with the condition we discussed.
So.
Would like to do that. You got Roger there?
Yes.
And who's second?
Second. Tom, Anthony. Anthony.
Anthony's, he's got his finger on the button. Okay, so, um, can we get a roll call?
Certainly. Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Salco?
Yes.
Chairman Santoro?
Yes.
Mr. Di Iona?
Yes.
And Dr. Patel.
Yes.
Okay, terrific. Happy to say your application's approved. Congratulations.
Awesome, thank you very much.
I good luck with you, good luck. Well, that was a great meeting, guys, very productive.
I wanted to tell her this is an early night. It's just, thank you for staying late.
Yeah, yeah, this is like, this is like, uh, yeah, half day. So, does anybody want to talk about anything? Because, uh, we're, we're open for that if, if anybody wants to discuss anything.
Yankees are losing in Field of Dreams.
I got that on, yeah. I'm taping it on Hulu right now, so I can get to it after this. So, um, again, I just want, I just wanna thank everybody for all the hard work that, that's being put in and also our experts, Dennis, Gary. Just really terrific job, um.
We pretty well caught up, right?
Yeah, I think we have, you know, something we've, we fought through it because we did double meetings for months. Right, and it was a lot of work and it's really, I was really concerned about, well, this burden on everybody, but I, I knew that the burden would be lifted soon and and we did it, so very happy about that. I appreciate everything that you guys, I think we're doing a great thing, doing some great things, so.
As I said earlier, we're probably gonna be asked to do a special in September for the Starbucks and we'll deal with that then. Uh, and it makes sense, frankly, something like that, uh, try to knock it off in one shot.
Hmm, I think so, I think so.
And hopefully it won't be controversial, but you never know.
It's gonna have a drive-through. How can it be controversial?
Because of the stacking lines, that's gonna be the issue.
It's gonna be so much safer actually than the one that's currently there.
Probably will, yeah.
Yeah, and I have to say, the Burger King looks beautiful. I mean.
I saw, I actually saw that, yeah, it looked like they're getting there.
I thought it's. It's, it's open, they're still finishing it up, but they got the lot part done and, you know, but it's open at least.
Yeah, the streetski, beautiful.
I still don't like the sign. I don't think it belongs in Madison.
Well, uh.
Not on Main Street, no.
Yeah, let me, let me just say something here that, you know, one, one act I have to grind. And I, I, I said this, uh, during the master plan, master plan committee meetings was to improve things, uh, east of the downtown.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and we had six or seven applications there, including Carol's and two ninety-five, two ninety-seven, main, three twenty-two, main, is, there's a bunch of them.
Yeah.
Right, and one thing I asked our experts, Dennis and, 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 uh, Mr. Stern, was to really focus on modernizing and upgrading these lots in terms of paving, curving, parking, lighting, uh, landscaping and trying to get some sort of really high-end consistency going in that part of town. And all those, all those things haven't come to fruition yet. Though we've gotten those applicants to agree those things and I think over time when those things are built out, it's really gonna make a difference over there.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, I think there's some compliance issues over there we'll have to talk about, maybe with, with the zoning. Like, you know, we have some slippage going on in that area where we've got two, two steps forward, a half a step or one step back with some things going on over there. But, um, I'm really happy and very proud of some of the things we've been doing over there. I really wanna really wanna do that, like Elm Street over the years, with, you know, Elm Street was kind of a nightmare, was a nightmare in Elm Street, right? But over the years, that has come a long way with, uh, with, um, you know, the couple of applications we've had there, plus the housing department, right? So, uh, you know, the western side of the zone, we've done a lot of stuff there and every time, every time something comes up, we really wanna pay a lot of attention to help that out, so. Um, so anyway, that, that's just my, my thoughts on it. I really appreciate what everybody's trying to do, you know?
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you. All right, so, uh, anything else? Because we're gonna go to adjourn. Okay, so, uh, can a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, well, in favor?
I.
All right, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you again, everybody.